Thank you, everyone. We're going to move to item number 13. The subject is Consider a Report Regarding the Review of Potential Violations of the City of Cupertino Municipal Code and City Policies Regarding Council and Commissioner's Staff Relations. Do we have a staff report by C D Attorney Jensen?
Through the mayor, I would like to recuse on this item. If I may make my statement. Okay. Thank you. Before we begin on this item, I need to make a statement. I believe that the council is making a quasi judicial decision here today whether to release an attorney-client privileged confidential attorney work product report. The Fourteenth Amendment of the U.S. Constitution guarantees all people the right to due process. The U.S. Supreme Court determined the following rights and protections for quasi judicial decisions. The person affected by the decision must be informed of the decision. The person affected by the decisions must be permitted to address the decision maker at a hearing before the final decision is made. And the person affected by the decision has the right to an impartial decision maker. The law requires that members of a council be unbiased when making a quasi judicial decision. If a counselor is biased, they are required to recuse themselves from a decision. I allege bias among all the members of the council for this decision. Councilmember Frueen, who made the motion to have the investigation against his colleagues and a former council, and Vice Mayor Mohan and Mayor Wei for supporting the motion. Councilmember Chow and I are discussed in the report of the civil grand jury. I am recusing myself because, in my opinion, the report is neither accurate nor unbiased. The report does not address political motivations for anonymous complaints about council members asking questions. The report also fails to acknowledge that asking questions is how the public receives information about how the business of the public is conducted. This is how I was able, for instance, to determine that Cupertino had not been properly reporting its financial information on a regular basis to the public. As a result of that work, I discussed this fact with the civil grand jury during my interview with them. That discussion is what led to the civil grand jury's prior report entitled, "Show Me the Money." But the problem with the current activities is that they fail to reflect upon the various parts of the discussion and the work process. Part of that, part of the job of staff is providing the council and public with information. Part of that job is to ensure that there is transparency in government processes, and a great deal of the work of the public is ensuring that people understand where monetary and lobbying-based influences arise and what their effects are. I see this current exercise as a pure sham, and I think it is shameful statement as to the protections that we are supposed to provide to the public. We owe it to ourselves to comport ourselves with integrity and not be unduly influenced. Here, not only is that undue influence operating, it is operating within the context of paid, undisclosed lobbying that has corrupted our system in both the private and the nonprofit sectors. Instead of providing the public with transparency, this sham of an exercise promulgates absurdity and an absence of accountability. It is absurd to tell the public that their public officials cannot ask questions. And this degradation and erosion of accountability puts us in peril for a financial mess, and perhaps that has already very quickly happened, in spite of the good efforts from the previous several years of good people. I do not believe this is an impartial council that should be making what appears to be a quasi judicial decision that will adversely and falsely impact individual interests and the community in the absence of due process. We have had bright, inquisitive, and hardworking colleagues on this council, and what I see now is political gamesmanship in the form of leveraging mechanisms of accountability in the name of discriminatory gains. These gains are not real. You would have us build and live on a toxic foundation, and if good people say nothing, then we will all suffer for it. For these reasons, I must recuse from this item. Thank you.
May I inquire of the city attorney? What is the process?
So, I think this would be a good time for me to give a brief presentation. So, what we're here today is to discuss whether a report of an independent investigation conducted into the conduct of city officials as directed by this council should be publicly released, or whether it should continue to remain confidential and attorney-client privileged. There are no rights of any individual affected by this report, so there is certainly no due process obligations, at least not at this time. And certainly, you know, Councilmember Moore was not advised to recuse herself, nor is she required to at really any stage of this process, including today. But if she chooses not to participate in the deliberation, that's her right to do so. So, the reason we're here today is because on December 19th, the Santa Clara County Civil Grand Jury issued a report entitled, "House Divided: Cupertino City Council and City Staff." On February 21st, as part of the city council's discussion of the city's response to the grand jury's findings, the city council directed the city attorney's office to investigate and report back on violations of the municipal code with respect to council staff and commissioner staff relations. The city attorney's office retained Linda Dobbie to conduct an independent investigation, and the council has been provided with a confidential attorney-client privilege report prepared by Ms. Dobbie. If council wishes to discuss this report in public, a majority of the council is required to waive the attorney-client privilege. The privilege belongs to the council as a whole, and the decision as to whether to waive the privilege is within council's discretion. If council wishes to discuss this report further, it may consider continuing this item to allow the public the opportunity to review the report and participate fully in the discussion. If council does not see the need to discuss this report further or discuss this report in public, no action is required today. And I point out that Ms. Dobbie is available on Zoom if there are any process-related questions that the council has. However, at this point, the substance of the report remains confidential, and so we're not prepared to discuss it, and as well as, you know, Ms. Dobbie's thought processes and deliberations in preparing the report are attorney work product and reflect her mental impressions, and so wouldn't be an appropriate topic for the discussion today. So with that, we are both available for questions from the council.
Thank you, city attorney. So, I understand Ms. Linda Dobbie is online to answer procedures questions?
Correct.
Okay. So, I'm open up for council questions. So, please remember, our city attorneys advised that this is still under attorney-client privilege, so no content and confidential information is to be revealed. So, do we have any questions? Yes, please, councilmember Chow?
So, I want to clarify. So, this report does not include the names of anyone who accused other people, but it does include the names of those who are accused. Is that correct?
I'm not prepared to discuss the substance of the report.
Okay. So, but this report include names?
I'm not prepared to discuss the substance of the report.
Okay. And there was no, so we can discuss the process of preparing the report, and there is no cross-examination so that any of the statement provided to Ms. Dob is able to be verified and cross-examined by anyone who are accused, right?
That's correct. That would be, that's the standard practice for preparing this kind of report.
And I have asked for even for the part that I was interviewed that requested a transcript of my interview, because I feel the report is extremely biased and inaccurate. And I requested a transcript of the interview, and I was told the transcript itself is confidential, therefore the transcript of every interview is confidential. The only thing that would be made available to the public would be opinions written by Ms. Dob. However, you can say it's neutral, but it's an opinion. Is that correct?
No, that's not.
No transcript will be...
No, that's not correct.
I mean, first, no transcript of any of the interview could be made available.
So, there is no transcript available for your discussion with Ms. Dob, Dobbie. I believe the advice would remain that the report is final, and that, you know, any attempt by council members to influence the opinion of the independent investigation would raise pretty serious ethical concerns, so I would advise you not to do that.
So, would you say, would you say that if a report gives an opinion about a conversation, but there is no quotation from that conversation, would you say that's an opinion rather than since there is no quotation of facts?
Again, the substance of the report remains confidential.
I mean, this has nothing to do with the report. I mean, would you agree that if a report does not provide any quotation or transcript of an interview, then the statement made in the report is an opinion of the report writer?
I'm not going to answer hypothetical questions.
This is just standard practice.
Ms. Dobbie's report reflects standard practice. If she would like to opine on that, she is available.
So, could you, so any of the interview, people who are interviewed were not made aware of the accusation made against them, so they could address those accusations to provide the evidence to show whether it's accurate or not?
I don't think that's an accurate statement.
You mean, at least for me, no attempt has been, no material has been given to me, anything that I read in the report, and then I didn't see those until I read, and then the report did not provide any facts. So, I would have liked to have a conversation on the accuracy of those accusations, but I was not able to bring that up in the interview because I was not aware of those.
Everybody who's identified in the report has had the opportunity to speak with the investigator.
So, council, former mayor Darcy Paul has, I think he sent an email that he, I was seated on, that he requested the written questions because he does not have time, and he has not, was not given an opportunity to do that.
Yeah, again, every person that was identified in the report has had the opportunity to speak with the investigator.
Sorry, 20 seconds left. So, I did not receive the report until 3:00 P.M. yesterday, and I didn't have time to really read through them. I only had maybe about 10 minutes to glance through them today at work. And so, I would request that please postpone this item if you want to make any action, because I need to go through the report to respond.
Thank you, councilmember Chow. Do we have questions from council? This is the question time. Councilmember Frueen?
Yeah, I just have a few questions for Ms. Dobbie, if she's willing.
Right. Ms. Dobbie?
You're muted, Linda.
Good evening, Mayor Wei and councilmembers.
Good evening. Just a few questions to lay the groundwork for what your background is. Could you tell us, for example, how long you've been practicing law, what sort of law you've practiced, what your experience is in producing reports of this character?
Yes, I've been a public lawyer for approximately in excess of 30 years. I worked for the city of Long Beach for 10 years. I was with a fairly large law firm in Los Angeles for another eight. I matriculated my way north to Sonoma County. I served as a contract city attorney for a city in Contra Costa County for another eight years, and then I've been, I ran my own law firm for the remainder of that, and that's what I'm doing now. I've done a lot of litigation. I have also probably conducted over about 400 of this type of investigation, and I frequently am called upon to do expert witnessing. I also do work with the pro bono work with the EEOC, doing mediations and also investigative work.
Thank you. Was there anything unusual about this investigation compared to the ones that you've typically done?
No, no. The, it was, the thing that stood out was the, you know, what you do is look for credibility. And, you know, I basically don't have a dog in this hunt, so to speak, and so what you're doing is looking to see, you know, what are the factors that are most important, and I think I've listed some of those in the report. But what you do then is you interview, you know, I've interviewed 16 people in here, current and former employees. You then, because of the numerous emails, which I went through, which was about, oh, probably up to 800, I don't know, my eyes are going a little bit, but I went through and I compared what the statements were with the email exchanges. I also asked each of the witnesses to, you know, if you had documents and so forth that supported your case, then I was able to look at that. I looked for discrepancies in the statement. You know, it's basically, you know, can you verify the fact? And in this particular report, there was an inordinate amount of consistency in everything that was said. At that point, then, I talked to other people to find out if there's another side of the story.
Good. Thank you. I think that that's all that I have.
Thank you, councilmember Frueen. Do we have any more questions from the council? Vice Mayor Mohan?
Thank you, Mayor Wei. A question to Ms. Dob. Did the people, were the people who were mentioned in the report, did you, in your line of work, did they get sufficient opportunities to explain themselves, or, yeah, maybe explain themselves, and did they get an opportunity to make sure that, whatever, the accusations or the incidents that were mentioned were handled from their side as well, and it wasn't just one-sided?
As far as I could tell, because there, it was more, not so much consistent or individual incidents, but collectively, there were just a couple of things that, you know, and I had very good conversations with the people mentioned in the report. So, as far as I was concerned, the issues where there was the other side of that story, those are the things that have been included in the report. Does that answer your question, Vice Mayor Mohan?
Yes, yeah. I just wanted to make sure that both sides had adequate opportunities to explain themselves.
Okay. I think one of the things, and if I may comment, one of the issues that you saw in the civil grand jury report, and I did watch that council meeting, that there were some issues raised about some of the findings there. So, one of the things that I wanted to do, which was sort of a carry-on, was to ask questions regarding, you know, what the issues were with the report, so.
Thank you. I have a couple of questions. Thank you, Ms. Dobbie. Can you wait a little bit while I ask our city attorney one question first? So, city attorney Jensen, when the council instructed you to find an investigator, did you do due diligence and find a professional you feel that would give the council an unbiased professional investigation?
Yeah, yes. Ms. Dobbie is an experienced municipal attorney, and her current practice is doing this kind of personnel investigations as well as this kind of investigation, and so she has extensive experience. And again, the purpose of retaining her was to prepare an independent report.
Thank you. Ms. Dobbie, can I ask you a couple of questions, procedural questions? In your profession, in your professional opinion, this particular case, you have applied the customary and professional procedures to come up with an independent report. Would you think that's accurate, or can you elaborate on it?
Yes. You know, I am a frequent speaker in terms of processes. I am asked by several, I represent currently, I go all over the state because I came from Southern California, and so I'm frequently asked to go back there. And, you know, I'm asked by city attorney's offices and by county council's offices to evaluate other investigative report. And to me, you know, one of the things that I forgot to mention is that I started out, I do a lot of work with police departments and fire departments and so forth, where you really have a focus on the credibility of, you know, whatever the report is that's generated, because these things, you know, you have to base on facts, you cannot base on opinions, you have to verify and so forth. So, yeah, I, this one, you know, I'm a stickler on that, because again, from my approach, you know, I'm not here to say, or, you know, I don't approach these things like, well, you're the bad person and you're, you know, the good person, and, you know, I don't do that. My approach is problem solving. If you've got issues and concerns, let's just lay them out and see if we can move on. And that's always been my approach, and I will tell you, there are some clients that don't like that, because, you know, there are some people out there that do investigations that simply say, well, I've got to do this, and I've got to find always for the person that hired me or whatever, because otherwise, I'm not going to, you know, be retained. I'm at a stage in my career where what's important to me is truth, veracity, and the whole thing, because one of the reasons I'm still, one of the things that's really always important to me is to see if we can make local governments much better. So, yeah, I would go to the bank on this one and would testify and have testified in terms of, you know, the quality of a report.
So, thank you, Ms. Dobbie. So, I'm going to further pursue this. You would say that this report that you produce is independent and verified by facts, even though you're interviewing people, but you do go over factual materials that you get to verify the words of people? Would that be a fair statement?
That is a very fair statement, yeah, absolutely. Because, you know, if you do these things, the ultimate goal to do these things is to address the situation and to say, okay, if we've got issues, you know, what do we need to address and fix those kinds of things? So, yeah, that's really important to me personally and in terms of my professional reputation.
Thank you, Ms. Dobbie. I have no more questions. Any questions from the floor? I will open up to public comment. Ms., do we have any?
Yes. Mayor, we have, I have four speaker cards for community hall, starting with Jennifer Griffin, followed by Brooke Ezit, and Lisa Warren, and Darcy Paul. And I see one hand raised on Zoom. Welcome, Jennifer.
Yes, it's mic, yes, and mic is working. I would just say that no one introduced the nice lady that was on the camera that you were speaking to, so I didn't know who she was. She was not introduced that I saw. I would have preferred that she was here. I thought, reading this staff report, that this was just going to be something about, we're going to make this grand jury report public. Okay? So, it turns out that it's a witch hunt. We are going after three elected city council members. Okay? You have to understand the frame of reference that a lot of the public are coming from, I'm coming from. I belong to three groups in California that are fighting the housing laws. Okay? Let's get, let's understand that. I feel that my state is threatened, that every democracy, every democratic law that my ancestors died for. We had five people killed before the Revolutionary War in South Carolina by machete. So, you can understand the toll that the last years have taken on everything that I believe in. I never thought that my state would reach this point, that we were removing sitting, elected city council members that disagree with the YIMBY ethic and all of the money that is being pumped in by Google and Facebook. Let's get it all out there. This is a witch hunt, and this is what we're going to become if these housing laws are approved and the governor is involved, okay? Yeah. Jerry Brown, I said before that I have little faith in anyone that is elected at the state level. I have faith in certain members of my city council, because I have been down in the trenches when we were fighting the urban, whatever those things was that San Jose was trying to do, where they were putting in 300-foot-high urban villages. Okay, I was in the trenches with these people five years ago, and that's why they're elected on your city council. Yes, I think this is a witch hunt, and they're, I don't know, okay, I've seen a lot of stuff in here in 23 years and five years in the county before when we were trying to annex, but I don't care what you do with that grand jury. You need to make sure that the public knows, because to me, I don't see this. It's a witch hunt.
Thank you, Jennifer. That is your time. Next, we have Brooke Ezit, followed by Lisa Warren, followed by Darcy Paul.
Hi, I'm Darcy Paul, and Brooke and Lisa have agreed to cede their time to me. So, with, okay, with the leave of...
Mayor Wei, point of order. So, the rules of procedure provide that if a speaker representing five or more members of the public in attendance and wishing to comment on an item but electing not to speak, the speaker may have up to 10 minutes to address the council. Consolidation of time among speakers is not otherwise allowed. If council wishes to do something different, it does have the ability to vote to suspend the rules.
I have approximately six minutes, and I think if I could be heard on that, that would be much appreciated.
What's my fellow councilmember's preference?
I'd be willing to vote to suspend the rules in order to allow Mr. Paul to speak.
Me too. Okay, thank you. Please go ahead.
Okay. I think maybe you should have taken the poll of councilmember Chow as well.
We have three already, so.
Well, sure, but she still counts, right?
I'm pretty sure she's going to say yes. Thank you.
Okay. Hi, I'm Darcy Paul. I find this course of action taken by the new council majority in investigating the prior council extremely disappointing. When a political majority asks for an investigation like this, it is not only without precedence in the city of Cupertino, it is also, in my opinion, requested by the very group that should be investigated. Overwhelming amounts of special interest dollars have, over the years, attempted to wield grossly disproportionate amounts of financial influence over our elections. Unfortunately, as a result of these activities, rather than focusing upon the work, the focus has been upon discrimination-fueled persecution of those doing the work of reading, objective thinking, and the sharing of opinions and perspectives without fear of undue political or monetarily-based reprisal. Unfortunately, the truth of the matter is that such reprisal does indeed exist, and it exists in full force as reflected by actions of a new and narrow political majority. I do welcome the opportunity to have a meaningful and fair dialogue. That approach was what I worked and sacrificed for during my time in public office. I think that, as a result, our community did very well, because people and entities who engaged with this approach realized that this was not about short-term superficial gains by sacrificing substance, but about the intrinsic value of ensuring integrity of process. of process, consideration, and delivery of implementation. My concerns are that now, the work of the public has been attacked, not for legitimate reasons related to the details and challenges of democratic governance, but for political purposes grounded in superficial optics and maneuvering devoid of any real redeeming thoughts. I question this process. In a backdrop of the corruption of our institutions that are supposed to be protecting the electorate from a lack of transparency and greedy influences, I question the nature of the anonymous complaint that motivated this investigation, and I believe that you have placed yourself in an untenable position of pursuing bad politics and bad policy. I don't think anything will get done with these methods of not doing the work, inviting a slew of special interest dollars, and then blaming decent, smart people for the problems of the people you are, in effect, using to advance yourselves. Well, things will get done, just not very palatable things, in the final analysis. We can start by asking ourselves, how can you have due process preserved when you go directly from a report which was apparently being researched last week? I asked the investigator to send me written questions last week and received none, to one that is now being put up the following Tuesday for consideration of public disclosure. This majority voted for the report. Has it conducted any fact-checking and diligence? Beyond political and monetary biases and influences, does anything drive the process here as controlled by this majority? If so, it does not appear evident. Since I left office, I have done my best to respect the space of a new composition of the council. I wish and hope that people tasked with doing the work of the public, and who have been given the substantial responsibility of representing our electorate, take this role seriously, study the issues with humility, and act accordingly with the realization that the work of public office in our society is neither glorious nor fun. It is certainly not vindictive. When we lose sight of the fact that the elected job is grounded in self-sacrifice, listening, and thoughtful engagement, then we are implementing a very different system than the one we aspire to deliver. In my first three years on council, I didn't go on a single city-related trip. I stayed here, and I did the job, and that effort generated workable policies, and those policies led to real affordable housing projects. It led to community discussions on the innovative and the challenging. And while we had differences, we also had discussions, and we did things. Do the job. Stop these attacks on people that you have already actionably damaged. Wherewithal exchanged for pure viciousness delivers no results.
Thank you, Darcy. And so, Lisa, do you wish to speak? And Brooke, do you also wish to speak? Okay, so, welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So, I'm going to start with, months ago, I asked for a definition, a true definition that's used by this city and in the documents that use the phrase of undue influence, and I later asked just a small number of people, actually one person, to add to that request a definition of due diligence. I haven't gotten either, and I still am requesting that. That being said, and besides that, I ask you all to recall your workshop with facilitator Dave Sykes and his comment that if you learn and can work together as staff and council, among council, among staff, it's the only and best way to serve the community you're all here to serve. What I'm sensing here is that this is not fit into that framework at all. I guess I'll close with thanking Councilmember Moore for recusing herself. However, I'm disappointed I won't be able to hear what she says, other than the very powerful and accurate words she has already shared before her recusal. And I just wish this city was a different place than it currently is.
Thank you, Lisa. And we, next we have Rhoda. Welcome, Rhoda.
Good evening, again. It's hard to follow these speakers, and I'm a little weak in the knees after hearing that and these reports on the dais. Y'all ran your campaigns on transparency. Kitty Moore and Liang Chow have been champions of transparency. I could talk all night. If not for Kitty, Cupertino would have been out of compliance financially, and I'm grateful to her, and we all should be, that we're not building on toxic soil at Valco. Thanks to Liang, we can read presentations before council meetings. Kitty is a civil engineer and has become a CQ expert in more. Liang is a brilliant problem-solving, is brilliant problem solver with a PhD in computer science. Hong, you're a longtime public servant, and Sheila, you come with so much finance expertise, and JR, you passed the bar exam. So, you know, this really looks like further dividing our council. We have important work to do. Y'all need to work together. We've got this big budget issue coming ahead of us. That's where your focus needs to be, instead of continuing to divide. Y'all need to do a training with the Arbinger Institute on the anatomy of peace, so you can work better together. Y'all are better than this. I know you are. So, please, stop dividing and work together. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. Next, we will move over to Zoom. We have five hands raised. Jennifer Sharon, San R., Peggy Griffin, Luis Sedati, and Tessa Parish. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Way and council members. I'm speaking on behalf of myself only this evening, though I am a Parks and Rec Commissioner. I urge you tonight to release the confidential report. We, as residents, have voted for city council members who then appointed commissioners. These are public officials, and their actions affect every city resident. I, myself, was sworn in just a few months ago, and I knew at that time I was taking on a duty that had specific requirements. Every other commissioner and council member knows that, too. We, as residents, deserve to know whether all our Cupertino elected officials are fulfilling their duties, including whether they are interfering with day-to-day operations of the city, whether they are respectful towards our paid city staff, and whether they are violating our Cupertino municipal code. This is just common sense. It's also clearly part of being a transparent city, a transparent city government who represents and respects its citizens and staff. Let's continue to move forward, as we have been these past few months, with that respect and transparency, by releasing this report. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next, we have San R., followed by Peggy Griffin, followed by Luis Sedati. Welcome, San.
We, and as members of the council, during your term, I have, on multiple occasions, pleaded with you all to please work together. This is not Washington, DC. This is not a two-party city council. Election campaigns and elections are over, and we request the council to work together and tackle the big issues that are in front of the city. To continue to spend time on this topic and not provide the decency and privacy that it deserves is only reflecting on the vicious politics that have continued after the elections. We have seen that show up time and time again. A well-respected planning commissioner and resident was maligned in public for over an hour, with people coming in from outside the city and booing during council proceedings. The respect that we provide our city staff in performance reviews is not the respect we're providing our elected officials. A mere 442 votes separated a council member sitting on the dais from one that could have been there. A mere 442 votes separated the entire destiny of how Cupertino could have shaped up in four years. We wouldn't have had 600-square-foot LED signage. We can go on and on on things that we would not have had. I request you to please work together and stop the politics, and let the decency of privacy be afforded to the people named in this report. This should be a private matter, not exposed to the public, and let council move forward with issues that the public can actually measure your impact on. Mayor V., one-third of your term is over. What impact will you have that people will look back on 10 years from now to say, this is what Mayor V. accomplished? I request you to please think about your legacy 10 years from now. Let it not be time spent on these small matters. Finally, I want to say that in the election of 2024, this is going to be an issue that will come up. Your decisions in these matters will be known to the residents of Cupertino. Do not forget that only 60% of Cupertino voted, and only 442 votes separated the current majority from what could have been. And you can be assured that behaviors that are shown here will determine how intensely people are going to campaign to make sure that other 40% makes up.
Thank you, San. That is your time. Next, we have Peggy Griffin, followed by Luis Sedati, followed by Tessa Parish. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, and council members. As Jennifer Griffin said, many of us view this as a witch hunt. When JR added that to the last minute of the procedure manual, or the grand jury, it was with intent, intent to discredit longtime, respected, and hard-working individuals. The Gang of Three, which is the majority, created a regime that reduces transparency, public participation, public involvement, exchange of information. That's what's happened in the last five months. The workshop that Dave Sykes provided might as well not have been done, because you're not doing it. You're not even trying. You've had attacks, accusations, all for political gain. You've talked about building community, cooperation, collaboration, yet all your actions over the last five months have been contradictory to those goals. Kitty Moore has done wonders for transparency. She has brought us in compliance, and yet now we're out of compliance. She has worked hard to make sure that the city's finances were meeting state goals and state laws. Liang Chow has worked diligently to make sure that transparency and public input and public involvement was critical to their regime, but not you. You have eliminated this. You have eliminated participation. The council meetings are shorter, because nobody gets information. In fact, some of the items don't even get mentioned. They just appear on paper. So, I'm asking you, and I agree, that maybe you should look at the anatomy of peace and stop dividing. Find ways to unite. There are many topics that you all have in common. Find those topics. Stop attacking. Stop trying to divide. Work together. We, as a city, need that. Please, and don't release this. This is confidential attorney-client privilege. If it's released, it will be used for political gain. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Luis Sedati, followed by Tessa Parish. Welcome, Luis.
Hi, this is Luis Sedati. Thank you to Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members, City Manager Wu, City Lawyer Jensen, and city staff. Be transparent. Show us the report. I agree with item 13. This is about transparency. The civil grand jury found some very alarming findings, which cannot be ignored or dismissed. A grand jury report is not private. Decency is not hiding the report. Decency would be transparency. The Cupertino public should receive a report regarding the potential violations of the city of Cupertino municipal code and city policies regarding council and commissioner-staff relations, as first reported by the grand jury. We cannot ignore a civil grand jury. The city waiving attorney-client privilege would allow for the public release of the report. This would enable the details of the grand jury report to be opened for city and public review. The city, the Cupertino council, city staff, and residents can then consider further responses to the finding. The grand jury findings were serious, and Cupertino is legally required to address its findings. Having the results of the, the details of the result made available to all of us would help bring the details to light and for good governance for all to proceed. Any council member can defend themselves in an open discussion following an open, full public report. It is transparency to have the report details made available to everyone. Political gamesmanship is usually called out by those who participate most in political gamesmanship. Show us the report. Show us the details. To the one council member, do not allege gamesmanship while you yourself display gamesmanship. Be transparent. Waive attorney-client privilege. Show us the report detail. Any council member can defend themselves by giving details. This is any council member's time to speak. A council member can say they did not have the opportunity to give their side, but they were interviewed by the civil grand jury. Then the same council member, refusing herself, is not backing their statement that they weren't given a chance to give their side. This is her chance to present her case. Who's accusing herself in place, she cannot defend her previous actions when given an opportunity to. Any diversion from the issues at hand with off-topic, not central to the issues brought up by the grand jury, is obvious obfuscation. Do not make allegations, including financial or whatever, without proof. Don't attack the messenger as one council member.
Thank you, Luis. That is your time. And our final speaker is Tessa Parish. Welcome, Tessa.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I am just going to mention things I've noticed since I've been involved, and that is when I first got involved, right before Liang and Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Kitty got elected, they were heavily supported by the residents of Cupertino. And the city council, the other three that are now pushing this, have always been known, through next-door posts and whatnot, to be heavily supported and funded by developers and special interest groups. And whether or not they were directly, and whether or not it was a PAC that was funded by them, it was known. So, I would like everyone here, including the attorney that's investigating, to keep that in mind if there's any bearing in that judgment. Also, the question I have for the attorney, Dobby, is if there were, within city corrupt, city staff or otherwise, I hate to say staff, but if there was any conspiracy towards, or leniency towards, a certain group, are there any measures in place to reveal those? And the reason I ask that is because when Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Moore were elected, there were staff that left immediately before ever giving them a chance to work with them. It was very obvious. And when I spoke to them at the time, before they left, they were very, almost rude to the residents that were trying to get some answers. So, I'm really questioning the individuals that made these accusations and the legitimacy, because I've had the chance and privilege to work with both Councilmember Chow and Councilmember Moore, and I've never met some more honest, incredible individuals that really had the residents' interests at heart. So, please keep in mind, some of the developers, what's going on. A $4 billion project with... A $4 billion project with possibly international money coming in, heavily, heavily pushed. I think the plan was always to get them elected and has always, I mean, it just seemed it was like bang, bang, getting them. As soon as they came in, they had a plan and they started to. They'd elected Mayor Way before the election council, the meeting ever happened, and it's just been very obvious to me that this was on the agenda and the plan. So I beg everyone here to please keep in mind, elections are coming. Thank you.
Thank you, Tessa. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, and thanks for all the public comments. I'm going to bring back this to council. Please keep in mind that we have not voted to waive the attorney-client privilege, so no content of the report is going to be discussed. I'm bringing back to council discussion. Anybody would like to make comments? Go ahead. Oh, okay. Councilmember Chow?
So I work full-time, and I spend time serving on nonprofits to work with high school students and others. I won't spend time writing emails to ask questions to investigate issues unless it's very important to the residents of Cupertino. I'm accused of asking too many questions. We serve the public. Many residents appreciate the fact-
Point of order. I would caution against discussing the contents of the report at this point.
Many residents appreciate the fact that council members are responsive to their concerns, and they appreciate the questions I ask. Have any of the residents been interviewed? None of them. This is why this report is biased. It didn't interview the most important people in this room, the residents, who elected us. It didn't interview any of the residents whom all the city staff is hired to serve. I was interviewed. I cannot talk about the content, but glancing at the report, only on the portion related to myself, this is the most biased report I have ever read. I asked, the transcript, as City Attorney alluded to, cannot be released because that's attorney-client privilege. However, the council is asked to waive privilege only on this report, which is a collection of narrow. I find that the preparer of the report took things, didn't even took twisted my words, didn't quote my words, and out of context, to shine the most negative light on what she thinks I said, but I didn't think I said anything close to that at all. But that's the spirit of the report. So now I'm talking to my fellow council members. I think this, you are elected to serve the Cupertino residents. This is the report, consists of opinions, not so different from the civil grand jury. It's collection of hearsay because there is no cross-examination, no swearing to say the fact, and no way to even verify what the report is derived from because all the supporting material is still a client, is still privileged. So the public will be able to only see a report similar to Grand Civil Report, which, as we know, is a collection of hearsay with no facts. And so I must ask my fellow council members, what are you trying to achieve? Are you trying to advance your political goal by reviewing this? If we are trying, if the goal is to improve the process of the council meeting, we are already on our way of doing that. Exposing this very biased report and only the report, not any of the supporting material, will only tear the city apart, and it does not really achieve any of the goals that we should be working on. Better working relationship? If there is anything we can improve, we can continue to work on that. We have a council workshop coming up. We are going to review our council procedure. That's the kind of the positive things we can work together. So it's your decision. If you want to turn this working relationship into a hostile witch hunt, then you are saying that with your vote today. Thank you.
Do we have other comments from other council members? Councilmember Foon?
So when I originally moved for this investigation as part of our response to the civil grand jury, my intention was twofold. One, to demonstrate to the civil grand jury that we took their report seriously, as we should have, and that we were actively seeking to improve our city governance if the allegations could be substantiated. And then, second, to determine whether the civil grand jury's findings were accurate, and if so, to what extent, so that we could address the matter however this body can. The end goal is to improve city governance so that the conduct of this body complies with the law, so that we can create a workplace likely to retain great employees, a thing that is increasingly difficult, and so that we can have a better city. And frankly, I don't see how we can accomplish all of the reasons for asking for this report without disclosing it and its findings. And I think doing so is consistent with our general commitment to transparency, a thing that everybody on this dais, including Councilmember Moore, ran on. At the end of the day, we all have to be accountable for our own actions, and we should all be either proud or otherwise of what we've done in the past as reviewed in the report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Foon. Do we have any? Vice Mayor Mohan?
I just want to make a very brief statement. This was a follow-up to the grand jury report, which was a public document. At that time, council members felt that they, the allegations were inaccurate, that they hadn't, that they did not have a chance to explain themselves. So during this process, there was an independent attorney, an investigator, who looked at all the incidents mentioned in the grand jury report and beyond. And this was the opportunity that the council members had to make their case and correct all the incidents which they felt were inaccurate in the grand jury report. So in the interest of transparency, we all talk about transparency all the time. So in the interest of transparency, I don't see why this should not be made public so that the public can get a chance to look at it and we can move forward from that point. Thank you.
So I know my name's been thrown around because I'm the mayor. Yes, I, we want to work together, but on the premises of being honest, having integrity. And this report, as stated by Councilmember Foon and Vice Mayor Mohan, it is to verify that civil grand jury, because when that report came out, there were statements that they were not true, this is really not what had happened, it was just one-sided story from staff. So to further, this report is to really verify whether, you know, are council members being blamed wrongly, and I'm hoping that it, that, you know, so. And the second thing is, I want to call out for respect. We have a professional, Ms. Linda Dobby. She is a professional. She produces unbiased reports. She's not connected to any one of us. She's not connected to special interest, and I trust our city attorney has secured us a professional to give us unbiased report. In that respect, I don't see it saying in the dais, and I want to show that we need to respect professionals who produce an unbiased report. And we talk about transparency. This is paid by public fund, and this is to verify the grand jury report. It could be, it could go both ways. So for transparency, I do believe our public has the right to know what's in this report. As for working together, how can we work together if we don't ourselves, are not honest with ourselves and are not transparent, are not willing to work together? So I am going to move to waive attorney-client privilege over and to authorize the public release of the confidential investigation report prepared by Linda Dobby dated May 1, 2023, provided that such waiver would not extend to the subject matter of the report or to underlying materials considered in the course of the investigation. And I further move that to continue this item to a special meeting to allow opportunities for the public to review the report before any further discussions by the city council. That is my motion, and I'd like to ask for a second, please.
Second.
Second, Councilmember Foon, any further discussions? If not, I'd like to vote by light.
The motion carries with Chow voting no and Moore absent due to recusal.
Thank you. Now we're going to move to consent number, enter number eight. Do we need a recess? Nope. Okay. So we're going to move consent number to number eight, which is being pulled from the consent agenda. Do we have a staff report?
Mayor Way, we do not have staff report, but we do have Public Works staff available to answer any questions. I believe the item was pulled by Councilmember Chow. Councilmember Chow, do you have any specific questions for staff?
This is a point of order. We should probably invite Councilmember Moore to return to the dais.
Yes, please. Welcome back, Councilmember Moore. I will open to questions from each council members. Councilmember Chow?
The reason I pull this item is because this is an allocation of amount, budget amount over $300,000. I think I have requested it before, but never acknowledged that this kind of item should not be on consent. This is a kind of item that the public would want to know, and I have other questions. Do I ask them now, or is there a staff presentation?
There's no staff presentation.
Okay. So how much do we have in the art in Lufi right now?
I will defer these questions to Director, Public Works Director Chad Mosley.
Hello, Council. Chad Mosley, interim Director of Public Works. Currently in the Art in Lufi, we have, I think, as it's indicated in the staff report, I believe it's $338,000. Is that correct?
So this item will exhaust all of the art in Lufi?
Our intent is to provide art amenities, public art amenities for this project that would probably be, probably come close to exhausting that. Any funds not utilized would be placed back in that Art in Lufi account.
And this project is already, I mean, it's a wonderful project, inclusive playground. That's why the city have been supporting that. But it's, or what's the total budget right now for the project?
Again, that information's in the staff report. I believe it is somewhere around $4.5 million.
Yeah. So we already have $4.5 million spent on this location and this project, and this art in Lufi, I think it's meant to provide art in Cupertino, which is much, much needed. I think we, we need, do need more art in Cupertino. And this item has not been through the Fine Arts Commission. I understand that it will go through to the Fine Arts Commission when the items are proposed to be selected.
That is correct.
Suda Mayor, just point of clarification. So what's being asked of council tonight is that this is a restricted Art in Lufi fund. We're asking council to allocate the funding for the artwork at Jollyman Park. This is not for equipment, and once the artist is selected and the art pieces are confirmed, it will go through the Fine Arts Commission for final confirmation.
Thank you. Any more questions? Councilmember Moore, please.
Thank you. So I had noticed that there had been a contract with Netzel Grigsby for playground fundraising, and we had spent $33,000, a little bit over that on this, to try to have a fundraising effort. Does anyone from staff know what happened with that?
I'd recommend that staff follow up separately with Councilmember Moore on that subject since it's not on the agenda this evening.
Okay. So, but we are looking at the funding for these extra amenities for this particular playground, and also, when I was looking at the budget, you have the library extended hours, over $600,000 has been allocated for that, and it hasn't been spent because we haven't had to spend the money for the extra hours since, well, the last check was $468,000 in 2019. So I was wondering if perhaps staff could come back and let us know if there is a way that that $600,000, because it's already in the budget, if it could be reallocated for this project, and it actually would, could cover another one that was in here. I'm curious about how that money could be moved around because we are not needing to spend the $600,000 for the extra library hours.
Suda Mayor, if I may, this is not the subject for tonight, but if you would like to add that to a future agenda item, that is the council's discretion. And point of clarification, the ask before council is to allocate the money that has been restricted for art. It is not to provide for additional amenities to the playground. This is purely for public arts.
Well, you can consider the art to be an amenity to the playground because it pretty much is. So also, so this policy, if I'm understanding correctly, it arose from staff and not council, who are the policymakers. So I was wondering if there was some discussion about whether or not to bring the concept to council to see what we thought about it first before having these kind of absolutes about, you know, you will take this money, you are, you are going to do this.
Suda Mayor, if I may. So Councilmember Moore, there is no absolute asking of the council tonight. This is staff's recommendation. Our professional opinion is how the money should be spent. It's completely up to council and your full discretion to decide. Staff will not have our feelings heard if you councils collectively decide that this is not the right place for the public arts to be implemented.
Okay. Thank you. And I want to point out that those are restricted funds, and there was an expectation for where, what would be purchased with it, and the city has multiple properties where the public art could be placed. And also, I'm going back to the $600,000, which is going to be, again, this year, unspent funds for the library extended hours. What's troubling me is that we're being kind of pushed into just looking at these restricted funds rather than opening the discussion up about the $600,000 from the unspent library extended hours of funding. So I, I wish there was a little more flexibility on the part of staff to look into that budget item and where it can be reallocated. Thank you.
Suda Mayor, I just want a point of clarification that I believe Councilmember Moore was referring to other budget, but this is a restricted Art in Lufi for public arts implementation. Again, this is staff recommendation to be implemented at Jollyman. Council has full discretion to decide if this is the right location. I believe Public Works staff will not have their feelings heard if council collectively believe that there's a better place. if, if council collectively believe that there's a better place.
Thank you. I would turn on to other council members. You have any questions? If not, I do have a couple of questions. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Mohan.
I had a couple of questions and I, staff did answer my questions, but let me reiterate it once more for the public. My one, my question was what makes Jollyman Park the most appropriate place for this Inlu fee revenue? And were there other locations considered?
At this, excuse me, again, interim director Chad Mosley. At this point in time, Jollyman is an appropriate location because we have an existing project that we believe would benefit from public art features. We believe that this is going to be kind of a, an area-wide location for people to come because of the, you know, the inclusivity of this project. We think it's an appropriate spot to add some public art. And because we have a project that's already underway, there will be some, you know, cost effectiveness of including it in an existing project as opposed to, you know, creating its own separate, unique project. With that stated, as City Manager Wu had indicated, we're offering this opportunity for council to consider the addition of these funds for art facilities at this project. But again, if council chooses not to do so, that's your prerogative. We're just providing this as an opportunity for you to provide those funds at this location.
One quick question. Are there any time constraints? Must we spend this within a certain timeframe?
With respect to the Art in Lufi funds, you know, they are, you know, the city does have a certain obligation to utilize those funds within a reasonable amount of time. The only time constraint at this point in time is for the project. We need to get this project started in relatively short order in order to take advantage of other grant funds that we've secured for this project. So we've brought this to you to provide this opportunity. If you decide not to move forward with this tonight, we will just move on from this and continue with the existing project so that we can be sure to hit those timelines for the other grant funds.
Vice Mayor Mohan, just to, just to clarify. So, so there's no immediate requirement to spend the funds if council chooses to put them to a different use. There, it would become an issue if, if, if the, if the city were to keep the fees, you know, in, over indefinitely or over a very long period of time. And so, so there would, we would want to start working on an alternative plan to spend the money if, if council decide to go in a different direction.
Thank you. Thank you. Go ahead.
So this Art in Lufi is from which project contribution?
This was from the storage project located off of Neander.
So the city is also doing master plan for Lawrence Smithy Park. I think Councilmember Mohan has a good point. And then we are also doing Memorial Park master plan. So if we exhaust this funding, then have you considered reserving some of them for these other two projects?
At this point in time, we have the funds and we're looking to just utilize those funds for this project. Again, depending on the features, you know, the art features that are chosen, if we don't utilize all of the funds, they will go back into that restricted.
So we can choose to maybe allocate half of it or a third to Jollyman. So we keep some funding for other areas of the city and especially Memorial Park where a lot more people visit, right? So we can do that.
I mean, that would seem like, that would be a possibility. I'm not sure if, if, we might not be able to get all of the art amenities that, that are being discussed if, if we don't.
But maybe those can be installed in other parks? Those, I mean, that's really nice amenities that you have suggested in the staff report. But I would love to see those in other parks, not just Jollyman. Because Jollyman is already going to get a really cool, amazing inclusive playground. So if other parks could get the musical bench and some of these other interesting interactive mosaic bench and, and their mural, those could go in any park, right?
So through the mayor, if I may. So staff's recommendation is to use, to utilize the current fund to implement at Jollyman. Again, if council feels otherwise, council has full discretion. I would necessarily labor my staff to do the design on the dais at this point to figure out what bench or which art element should go somewhere else.
Yes, my question is similar kind of art, art element proposed here. They are great, but they could be placed, I'm not saying designing this, but I mean, they are already proposals. So they could equivalently go for any other city park.
Through the mayor, I don't know if we can answer that question at this point without further analysis.
Matt is nodding his head.
So I have a couple of questions. I think the, one of them is answered, this, this money came from public storage project.
That is correct.
So usually a development have this Inlu fees. They usually does a art project right there. So this is the money that's only, we, how long do we, how usually do we receive Inlu fees?
For, you know.
Through the mayor, if I may. I believe it is in detail in the staff report. A project of certain size with expansion or whatnot is required to provide public arts per our municipal code. Given the location and sensitivity and the nature of the public storage project, it was decided that a Inlu fee is more beneficial to the city than having a public arts onsite. For instance, I believe the Beta Brother project will have a public art component. So is the Marina Plaza project. Typically, community development staff work with, with Public Works staff and also potentially Parks and Rec staff to arrive at that professional opinion to decide whether or not an onsite public art or a park in Lufi is the best solution for the city. In this scenario, the public storage facility project inadvertently volunteered to have the Art in Lufi. Therefore, the total amount that has been taken from the public storage project is being used or being proposed at the Jollyman Park.
Thank you. That's what I would like the public to know because this Inlu fee is because if you put a public art in the public storage area, it's really not a beneficial to our city. So I'm very appreciative of staff's professional opinion to arrive this, we have this much money. I like to follow up with Councilmember Moore's continued mention about the $600,000. That's another part of money that cannot be mixed with this project. I mean, we have funds everywhere. We have funds in general fund, we have funds in other projects. I'm hoping that we're not confused with $600,000 that could be put into this where we can pull that art, you know, in Lufi to somewhere else. Is that clear?
Through the mayor and to respond to Councilmember Moore, I am not aware of the $600,000 library fund that you were referring to. Be more happy to talk to Assistant City Manager to locate. But Mayor Way, you're absolutely right. What is being proposed is to, is for council to allocate what has been prior allocated for Art in Lufi. And, and point of clarification and point out by Councilmember Fooam that this is the first time the city has ever received a Art in Lufi. And then also detailed in staff report, we currently don't have a policy. Staff is working on a policy that will be brought back to council for final consideration. So oftentimes, council is used to seeing a public art being dedicated and offered onsite. And this is the first time we're taking Project X and put it on, on a city facility. So Assistant City Manager Morley, if you have the information to answer Councilmember Moore's question.
We, we need to do research on the $600,000, but assuming that it's for, if there, assuming there is $600,000 for library extended hours, that would be general fund dollars. And just like any other general fund dollar, that could be appropriated by council on, on any, any given Tuesday. The, the goal here is we've collected funds from, from a developer for the use on public art. And so the goal is to follow through with the commitment to use those funds for public art. And that's why our recommendation is before you.
Thank you. I don't have any further questions. Councilmember Moore, you have one more question, you have one minute.
Yes, so I was looking at Palo Alto's public art and their ordinance. They do have a public art fund and the, the money will stay in there until it's designated by their, their, their version of our Fine Arts and Culture Commission. So it's not having to be pulled out. I did a turn in for, for written communications, the, the library services account, the budget unit 160-636, and have confirmed with the JPA Santa Clara County Library District. The last check that we sent them was in 2019 for $468,000. But we have continued to allocate money for the extended hours, even though there's plenty of taxes there. So I would like to know because it doesn't sound like it is such a difficult matter for council to do to reallocate the money and retain the $300 and something thousand dollars in that, in the, in the restricted fund. And, and with regards to the restricted funds, I've been asking for this for some time to, to see what the actual restricted funds are. I think there are a number of them. So we can get to that later, but I'd like to have a, a report on all of the restricted funds which have been allocated from various projects. Thank you.
So, thank you. Any more questions? If not, I'm going to open up for public comment. No more questions? We're taking public comments, please.
Yes, mayor. So I have two speaker cards in Community Hall, one from Jennifer Griffin, one from Lisa Warren. I have handouts from Rota, but I, did you want to speak? Okay. And so we'll start with Jennifer. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, City Council. I have worked in public sector and private sector and for two, three startup companies in tech. I'm, believe me, when I say I have been coming here 23 years, I am very familiar with the art fund. It is not, you don't have to use it up at one time. You know, we went through the whole Main Street drama, which took, I think that was 10 years ago, but it was every bit as big as Valco. And we spent hours looking at maps and graphs and dialogues, et cetera. And they discussed the Inlu fee for art. And I think it's set, what is it, 7%, 3%? And it's, it's a flat amount. Okay, remember the people in the public, in the audience know these things, okay? We're not newbies. I've spent millions of hours sitting here, so I know this stuff by heart. The, the art, the, the funds in the art are not normally spent on one project. Now, I'm very familiar with the Magical Bridge. This has been going on for four years now. I think it's a wonderful project. A lot of it was paid for by grants from various people. Two years ago, we were up against having to get a park selected because we were going to lose the grant. Then I think we ran into COVID, things slowed down. But I, I don't know, I have a great respect for staff, believe me. I have been through so many city councils and mayors. We've had staff members come and go. Some people are still here, some people come back again. But I'm not really exactly sure why we have to have $300,000 of art on the Magical Bridge. Is it becoming the Big Black Hole Bridge? Are we putting in a Chakuli $20,000 glass project like they have at, I, I understand, I know we have one at Palo Alto Medical Clinic at Highway 85 in El Camino, but then my friend claimed that there's another one in Palo Alto. So we, are we just going to put a Chakuli out there for $20,000 and stick it in the park where it might break? I don't understand, okay, if, if they want to take, you know, $50,000 and do artwork with it or something, but at this point, we need to explain to the audience. And yes, it may be in the staff report, but there are people in the public who need to know what is going on because it's our money. The developers don't normally, the developers are required by law to give a certain percentage to the art fund. That is it. It's never been any different. So why are, and we've never spent it all at one. And thank, if a Valco ever builds out, we're going to have $40 million of art. But go look at Main Street, that money is still there.
Next, we have Lisa Warren, followed by Rota Frye. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. So there have been some misleading statements made about this in the last few minutes. So I would, I attended by Zoom the meeting close to a year and a half ago where Arts and Culture had this come before them. Staff explained because Arts and Culture is who makes the decision of whether dollars that are meant to be onsite are deferred and made into Inlu fees to go somewhere else. That's who makes that decision. That's how the city rules are written. Yet, for some reason, there's never been a rule on how that money gets distributed somewhere. And at that meeting, I spoke, the minutes don't reflect it because minutes don't say anything other than I was there and spoke. I asked staff and I suggested to the commissioners at the time, you're the people that are deciding this money is not going to need to go at public storage. I think it's important if you understand where the money's going to go and what's going to be done with it. And I believe that you should have the ability to decide where that money goes since you decided it wasn't going here and that's your job. Staff was unable to answer the question because there was no procedure. So I find it very uncomfortable to have something come with one plan. I don't know if it's a good plan or not. I just don't think it's being done properly. I don't think, and, and I applaud public, I applaud Public Works for being creative and trying to think of a way to put something else there. If they really think it's needed, I personally don't think it's needed. But that's neither here nor there. The problem is there's not a procedure and I don't think it's right for you to be asked to make a decision on one idea. And one question I asked was, was this project site considered? Meaning the Torrey Avenue or any other, were any other projects considered? Any other sites? And the staff answer was opportunities for art at other city field, facilities have not been evaluated. This is a one-shot thing. There should be choices. And that Arts and Culture Commission should be making the primary recommendation. Maybe it comes to you next and you say something. But what I heard from City Manager was after these items are selected, if you say yes and the items are chosen that will go at Jollyman, then her words were, it will go to Arts and Culture for confirmation. Not, not for a yes or a no, for confirmation. I'm not sure what that means, but it doesn't sound like they're making a decision. And I think that is the main thrust of the problem here. Not that it wouldn't be great to have whatever is being talked about, not that staff didn't have a good idea, the way it's being done.
And our final speaker in Community Hall is Rota Frye.
Good evening again. I want to thank Councilmember Moore for their comments. I also submitted written comment, which you probably have. Really great to see more explanation in the packet from staff. So I want to bifurcate the issues here. One is on the budget. So look, in 2021, December 2021, so it's almost 2022, a year ago or so, this project was going to cost us $1.2 million in city funds. And then somehow it ballooned in by another $1.1 million. So by, at today's point, we're at $2.1 million in city funds. And what's being asked of you tonight is to put in a 16% increase for this project of $340,000. So that would be us out of pocket $2.4 million. The total budget is at $4.6 million right now. Do we really need another .3 million? That would take it close to $5 million if we go that far. So, you know, with this amount of money, we should have everything that we need by now and anything extra is extra, right? And we're going into a budget crunch and we don't need extra right now. We need to economize. So I want to go on to what about the issue of the art piece? So that's a separate issue. Yeah, I started looking at the Cupertino Municipal Code and, you know, the, so the overall goals are to enhance community character and identity, provide attractive public arts to residents and visitors alike. And then it'd be visible from the street. You know, something about, what would that mean? You know, maybe some.
You know, maybe some sculptures at Quinlan, or sculptures even at other parks. We're just packing an awful lot of stuff in here. Thankfully, staff also provided some more information about the ideas of what would go in. And so, create a presentation for 3,500, that is not art, okay? That shouldn't, you know, to me, this looks like, I hate to say it, but I'm going to say it, because it's been eating at me, misappropriation of funds. Kaleidoscope installation for 83,000, you know, that kind of looks like, more like a landscaping or garden feature, that's also ineligible. Colorful peeking windows, is this art? And by the way, all art has to have an eight-by-eight inch plaque on it for the artist. Viewing binoculars, seriously? A musical bench, bird scavenger hunt, a multilingual tactile sign, the CMC explicitly says no to sign stair murals in a contingency of 50K. Not okay. Just please say no. Thank you.
Thank you, Rhoda. And next, we will move to Zoom. We have four hands raised, Peggy Griffin, Jennifer Sharon, Leanna Crabtree, and Louise Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. I second everything that Rhoda Frye has said, but I want you to think about it in a different way. You have the opportunity to do a win-win. This project, the current plan, has the construction documents being ready in August 2023. That's in, what, two, three months? The deadline is June 24, 2024. If we don't make that deadline, a grant is at risk. The staff has said that the schedule is on schedule to meet this deadline, and it is within budget. That's very unusual. You have the opportunity to not mess with that. The design is set, everything's in place, we're on a budget crisis. If you don't do, if you vote no, everything will go as planned, and we will get this design done on budget, on time. You also have the opportunity for the funds to be addressed in artwork at another location, or multiple locations. So I want you to think about that. The staff has done a great job, and, you know, it, I, you know, you always want more, but I looked at these items, and peeking windows, not art. Viewing binoculars, not art. Multitactical sign, not in the code. The bird scavenger hunt, questionable. A very large contingency. Think about this. You have a successful project, you can allow it to go forward as is, and have that on your resume, that it completed, and we will have a playground June of next year. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Next, we have Jennifer Sharon, followed by Leanna Crabtree, followed by Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Jennifer. Actually, I'm sorry to allow you to speak.
Thank you, Kristin. Good evening again, Mayor Way and council members. I'm again speaking on behalf of only myself this evening, and not on behalf of the Parks and Recreation. This city council has already approved this great amenity of an all-inclusive playground for our city's youngest residents. I'm really glad that that's not up for debate tonight. The issue tonight is whether adding art features to the playground is considered public art, and in-lu public art fees, whether or not they should be used to add art features to the playground. I say that art has no age. Many adults are conditioned to look at art as something static, like a painting or a statue. That's kind of what I think of when I think of art. Kids don't have these limits. In fact, our Municipal Code, Chapter 19, Section 148, says, "Any other form of artwork determined by the Arts and Culture Commission is permitted public art," allowing us to consider unique types of art. Whether it's hearing the first tune they make themselves on the musical bench, or climbing a stair mural, or all the colors they see in the decorative sun kaleidoscope, our children will be interacting with art and gaining an appreciation for it. This is the first time that the city is using art in-lufy's this way, and it will give us some great experience to create a forward-looking policy in the future. I encourage you to approve this tonight for all ages and abilities of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And our final two speakers that had their hands raised within the nine-minute time limit are Leanna Crabtree and Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Leanna.
Thank you. Good evening, council and staff. I really appreciate the comments of so many residents who've spoken this evening, giving context and offering, I think, very helpful suggestions for how to move forward with this project. I really appreciate what Lisa Warren was saying about how it seems that we really haven't involved the Fine Arts and Culture Commission in making decisions about what to do with these windfall funds from the public storage project, and that seems like a really unfortunate miss, that you have an opportunity, as others stated, to bring more people in to improving our public spaces, and people who generously volunteered their time on the Fine Arts and Culture Commission, and it seems that we're really not giving that resource its due, that we would benefit if we had, I think, more people thinking about how we could best utilize these funds. And I do agree with what Peggy Griffin said, especially that the project will move forward and will have a wonderful new playground for the community, and it doesn't need to have the art. It could have art, and the art could come later, but it's still a great project that has a much better chance of being on time and on budget if it doesn't have these other features added. And to the other point, that Jolliman Park has got a lot going on, and we have other parks, other public spaces that have far fewer amenities, it would be nice if, again, the Fine Arts Commission, Fine Arts and Culture Commission could be looking at other spaces where we might sort of share that wealth and resource of art. So, thank you, and I really hope that you will consider not moving forward with the art at this location, and consider bringing in the Fine Arts and Culture Commission to really interrogate what would be a great choice. Thank you.
Thank you, Leanna. And our final speaker will be Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Louise.
Hello. So, thank you. I am speaking to support the city staff recommendation of Item 8, using Cupertino's first in-lu art fee at Jolliman All-Inclusive Play Structure. Approval of 8 will optimize the Jolliman All-Inclusive Play Structures planning and include art in an optimal usage serving the community, especially the children. If the use of funds from the art in-lufy for the Jolliman All-Inclusive Playground is used, it will use to fund the following interactive art element as part of the project that children and adults could enjoy. Children and adults will come from all over the city to this central location in Jolliman, and art can indeed, children can enjoy an interactive art feature, including a decorative sun kaleidoscope, interactive musical bench, nature-related art, multilingual tactile sign, stair mural. Artists are capable of doing incredible things, and this would leave a huge opening for children to be introduced to art as an interactive feature. This would be an excellent and efficient merging of interactive art within the time constraints of Jolliman's play structure, and incorporate the art feature while construction is occurring for the play structure. I think this is a, I commend the city staff for coming up with an efficient and clever way to get the art installed in the middle of Jolliman being under construction. This will probably result in more efficiency and less cost. This is a creative and efficient solution for our city in the middle of the city versus Lawrence Mitty on the far edge of the city, Memorial Park, which will require three to four more years of planning, versus Jolliman that can be done by the middle of next year. So for the present, the time deadlines on Jolliman structure and our limited valuable staff time, we need to proceed with this win-win solution and approve Item 8 moving promptly. We should not ignore the Jolliman deadlines with further wandering around, investigating. We have a very professional staff, they have, the city staff, they have come up with a very clever, efficient solution. And children and adults will be drawn from all across the city to enjoy this all-inclusive structure, and for it to include art elements that will involve the children in interactive art play will be fabulous. So kudos to the city staff. Please vote yes.
Thank you, Louise. Mayor, that is the final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm bringing it back, I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back for council for comments. First, I'd like to take a couple minutes to ask two questions to verify a couple of things. I heard a few comments about staff, are you going to be able to do this on time if we add any art to it, to not lose our grants?
If those funds are approved tonight, we're going to be ensured that we're on time. If we don't get approval for those funds tonight, we're going to pass on adding these art features, just so we can make that timeline.
And second, I heard quite a few comments about we're in a budget crunch, why spend so much money? This has nothing to do with budget crunch. This is a in-lu fee restricted fund. Is that correct?
Through the mayor, this allocation of the money has been in a restricted fund, so this will not be coming from the general fund.
Okay, thank you. I'm going to open up to Councilmember Chow, I think you'd like to come first.
I think, I'm trying to, wait, I'm trying to share my screen. Oh, here. Okay. Yeah, I think the features mentioned in the staff report sound very interesting, and I would not object to having those artistic features in a playground. And it's good to know that whatever our decision tonight would not affect the schedule of the project. But I do want to make sure that we follow existing city code. So Municipal Code 19.148040 has ineligible artwork, and before that, it has permitted artwork. I think here, it's very clear, art means original art. If something that's really nice, artistic, but if it's commercially produced and available in multiple locations, it's not art. The idea of public art is not only to provide art to the city, but also to support artists who create original work. I thought that's the intent. That's why here ineligible work is, reproduction of original art is not eligible unless it's produced in limited edition. And directional functional element is not eligible. Art object that's mass-produced, not eligible. Landscaping and garden features are not eligible. So these other things, that sculpture, mosaic, these are eligible, but they need to be original art. So are we going to comply with the Municipal Code, with the proposal?
If I may, Susan Michael, CIP manager. We are aware of the code and the requirement that the art be original and custom, there will be no standard pieces used. If it's also of any comfort, the next step would be that we will return to the Arts and Culture Commission with a proposal, and they will review the art itself against those standards.
I, that's great, so I hope the Art Commission will have options to choose from, so that you can reach out to them earlier rather than later. And I apologize that I misnamed the chat earlier. Yeah, so, bye.
Councilmember Moore?
Okay, thank you. So, going back to the funding that I mentioned, so I am disappointed that we spent the $33,000 for fundraising, which was originally supposed to bring in, hopefully, $2 million, and then it was lowered to 1 million, and then in the end, we didn't have any fundraising money from that. But I did notice that the website has a donate button, and I was wondering, for this specific project, it's a little PayPal donate button on there, and I was wondering if any money has been collected for that, and maybe offline, you could provide an answer. And what would a donor get in return for using that? And is it a tax-deductible donation as well? I'm glad to hear the Fine Arts and Culture Commission will get a chance to see the objects. I'm not opposed to the art objects going at this location, but overall, I would like to see equity throughout the community when we're having these special installations provided, so that it's not just in one concentrated area, so that we can look to that moving forward. And as you know, I would have preferred the policy been floated by the council to have a discussion, so I think we'd better find a way to open that up. And Palo Alto seemed rather simple to follow, and it was structured pretty close to ours. And so I'm glad to see this is moving forward with the few caveats that I've mentioned. And I do hope that, and I'll bring it up like I mentioned, that the other funds, that we can look into that, and I think it's great for the public to also understand, and for myself to understand, how the money can be moved throughout the budget. I think that's an important bit of information, and we are going to need it in the next few weeks. Okay, so thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Do we have any discussions from the council still? Go ahead, Vice Mayor Mohan.
Since these are restricted funds, and I've asked these questions of staff, and I'm satisfied that there are certain efficiencies that will be generated as a result of placing this art in Jolliman Park as opposed to anywhere else, and that there are grant fundings which could, grant funding which could be in jeopardy if we don't proceed now or today. I am convinced that this is the way to go, and I would like to proceed with the staff recommendation.
Would you like to make a motion?
I had a couple of comments.
Oh, oh, sorry. Overlooked you. Councilmember Flynn?
I'm all the way over on the end here. I think these are a really good use of restricted funds. I think it's a great way to leverage those funds, so that we can use a project that is already in the works to try to figure out how we're going to use in-lufy, since we apparently haven't ever had to do that before. I'm also elated that the Arts and Culture Commission will have something substantive to do for a change. I've looked at a number of their agendas, and they frequently consist of ratifying the minutes, and we're looking at the work plan, and we have some really talented people in the Arts and Culture Commission, and I'd love to see them do something really good. I think that they'll enjoy looking at this. I'd also encourage everyone to review our Municipal Code with respect to what is and isn't considered public art. I think there's a lot of misstatements that have been made with respect to what is excluded and what isn't. And that's it. I will be very happy to support this project.
So that actually brings me to another question. The fine arts, no, the Arts and Culture Commission are going to decide on what kind of arts that's going to be put into the Jolliman Park. Is that the procedure?
Our next step is to return to the Arts and Culture Commission with a proposal. Um, our next step is to return to the Arts and Culture Commission with a proposal. We'll be coming with a specific proposal about how we would propose to install art in within the playground area specifically. And we'll need to have some conceptual designs to share with the commission.
Yeah, but the commissioners will have, um, you know, evaluated, review it, and make sure it's what they want. Would it come back to council again, or this is it?
I believe that is it.
Okay, uh, that's my question. So I have.
Point of clarification. I mean, it would come back to council if the contract awarded were above the city manager's approval authority, which could be given the amount of money it's.
Yes, so that's my second question. If they did not find enough art, I mean, if they have money left over, they're not forced to spend every cent, right? If they have money left over, that money will come back to the restricted fund for future usage.
Exactly, yes.
Thank you. I have no more questions. Council member Chow?
So you mentioned uh some conceptual art will be presented to the Fine Arts Commission with multiple pieces here, and we need original art. Shouldn't the Art Commission be engaged with reaching out to artists to help design these elements rather than the public work doing their job? And that I think Fine Art Commission likely have connections in the art community, and many people probably would really like to see their work being displayed in a public park. So can we reach out to the Fine Art Commission tomorrow so that they can help recruit artists to contribute uh pieces for Jollyman Park?
If I may, um, the designers for this project, MIG, have done amazing custom installations at other playgrounds. If you look at their website, you might see some examples. Our plan is to work with them and artists that they know, and that's part of our staying on schedule and budget, um, to develop the custom pieces. So that will be part of what we will be presenting, the specifics of the commission.
Could we possibly engage our local artists? I think our local artists, if we can engage them to present maybe Cupertino or Santa Clara County resident or resident artists, um, can can MIG especially reach out to them? But they can also connect with Fine Arts Commission for this outreach, right?
Thank you for the suggestion. Suggestion, we will take it under consideration in our development of the design.
Yeah, that's use our funding to support our local artists as the priority if possible. Thank you.
Any more questions? If not, um, do we have a motion? I I will move the recommended um action by staff. May I have a second?
I'll second that.
So it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussions? If not, let's.
Can I, can I add the my suggestion that we um prioritize reaching out to local artists for for the original art?
I I think the staff will try, and I wouldn't put that in the restriction because of the timeline. I would not, I I wouldn't second it because because of the timeline that they have to satisfy. I hope that I think they will do their best. That's what they have promised, but um if we put that.
So the direction could be make best effort to engage local artists for their original.
I do believe that's conveyed to the staff. That's mine. You can modify it, and I I am, I'm not gonna second it, so.
Okay. Um, Mayor, may I make a quick comment?
Uh, go ahead.
Um, just when I, when I think about these these playgrounds with regards to, I I appreciate the the idea to reaching out to the local artists, but it becomes really complicated because of all the colors that you're that you're looking at, colors and textures. And you've got a lot of design elements that they're gonna need to tie in. So um I don't want to complicate their 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 work. So that's my only comment I have there.
We have a motion. Do you want a second original motion?
Yes, still second.
Okay, it's moved seconded. If there's no discussion, let's vote by light.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Let's move to item number eleven.
It's ten sixteen. I just wanted to let you know if you want.
Oh, that's true.
Yeah, so we can start the item before uh ten thirty, and um we'll have to be, we will have to be finished by eleven absent a vote. Uh, the council to extend the meeting beyond that time.
Okay, do I need a motion to?
You do not, you don't need a motion at this time. You will, you will need a motion if we're still talking at eleven.
Okay, so let's continue. Hopefully, we can finish by eleven o'clock. And so let's continue to number eleven. Do we have a staff report?
Uh, Mayor Way, we do not have a staff report. Um, we do have uh Intern Public Works Director Chat Mosley here to answer any questions. The ask is for council to consider approving the semi-rural designation for um the allocation. And just a point of clarification that this is not a staff recommendation, rather, this is a proposal come uh provided by the property owner and an also neighborhood. So staff is taking the property owner's request to council for consideration.
Thank you. So um, uh, so I think I'm gonna open up for council questions before public comment. Council members, do you have questions? I do have a couple of questions. I'm gonna start with my questions. Um, so it it in the report, it says the city has, the city can um rescind the semi-rural um designation anytime if there's a need. If the city does do, I've never seen the city does it, but if the city does do that, if one or two homes have already been remodeled, rebuilt, and they didn't put that sidewalk in there, and all of a sudden, if the city says because of needs, we want sidewalks, then cannot be done.
City council, uh, ye- yes, that can be done. As part of these development projects, the city is still requiring dedication that would facilitate our ability to install sidewalks at a future date. So if we did deem this area a semi-rural designation, we had a couple of projects redeveloped, and they did not install those sidewalks, the city would have the ability to rescind the semi-rural designation, and we would have the ability, if we wanted to, to proceed with installation of sidewalk because we would have the necessary right of way for that.
Thank you. So I want to follow up for one more question is, um, if it is not a semi-rural, when they remodel or rebuild to a certain extent, they are required to install sidewalks. And who pays for it if there is not designated as semi-rural?
Uh, the the property owner would pay for it.
But if it's designated semi-rural and later on the city rescinded it, who pays for that?
Um, at that point in time, if the city was interested in progressing a project quickly to have sidewalk installed, it would be the city's responsibility.
So what do you mean by quickly?
Like if we wanted to initiate a project that extended sidewalk um immediately, sort of like what was done for Orange Avenue and Burn Avenue in the Montevista area. Otherwise, if we did not need or want to initiate a project quickly at some point in the future, if that property were were to redevelop at that point in time, they would be responsible for installing.
Understand, so i- if that project, if the house was being remodeled just a year, we might have to wait fifty years in order for them to do another project that's large enough to be required to do that. Okay, thank you for your clarification. I'm gonna open up to other council uh questions. Mayor Chow?
Um, I'm confused because the staff report here reads, with the findings presented above and the petition, the property owner having shown their support for the proposed semi-rural designation, the city staff recommends approval to forego the future installation of sidewalks along the east side of Carmen Road between Scenic Boulevard and Stevens Creek Boulevard. The semi-rural designation does not waive the requirement for curb, gutter, or street light installation. So it is the city's staff recommendation for the item to approve?
Um, through the mayor, I'll I'll answer that. Um, so it is a request coming from the property owners after staff evaluation and staff recommending um what the applicant is proposing.
Yeah, so this is, has been done in the past, right?
This has been has been done in the past. That is correct.
That we approve this semi-rural designation.
Are are you asking city why or the street only?
I mean, this kind of request from property owner.
I believe so.
Okay. And in that area, I remember I visited, uh, many areas don't have sidewalk. So even if it's going to be a property owner cost, um, it will likely be no sidewalk or maybe discon- disconnected sidewalk for many years to come, even if, even if one property owner maybe have did a renovation and have to install. But there will be, their neighbors might not move for another thirty years.
Through the mayor, so the city's goal.
Matt is not in your head? Could, and do you?
So through the mayor, the city's goal is eventually to have sidewalk as per the city plan. But as you mentioned, um, we can't control when property owners come in to do their renovation and therefore to do the improvement.
Ideally, but uh we, a larger majority of the portion of the city was uh annexed from the county. And the majority of the area do not currently have sidewalk and likely will not have. Unless a magic wand does sometimes provide all the cost of building sidewalk, right? So that's a reality we have in Cupertino.
Um, but we do have a policy through the mayor. We do have a policy to eventually bring the unincorporated area that were annexed into the city into the city standard by installing sidewalks. Would you like to add to it?
The city manager is correct. As as projects have larger um remodel um projects on the on the site, they they are required to install sidewalk um and and related improvements. It does lead in to a situation where we have sort of properties that are adjacent to other properties who don't have the improvements, and the intent is that it catches up over time. Uh, and we've been successful with that in some locations. In other locations, you'll see the odd house that doesn't have sidewalk where the adjacent do. And um eventually, we'll catch up with all of them. I think the the purpose of the code and the code that was put in place by previous councils was to was to address those sorts of situations. Uh, and in addition, there was a sort of an out provided for this rural designation that we're contemplating tonight, which would allow a particular neighborhood to forego the installation of sidewalks, not the other improvements, but the installation of sidewalks so that they can maintain that rural character um that that they that they currently live in.
May, so I think in this kind of rural area, even without sidewalk, there are usually, I see that there are still pavement area that pedestrian does have um a space to walk, right? Even, I mean, sidewalk is erased, but I have walked in those areas. There are still pedestrian.
So our, our, we have a standard for sidewalks. So when we make a requirement for sidewalks, it would meet the city standard, and that that's what you would see in a, you know, normal city block if you walked outside the door here. Uh, in terms of a wider street, um, the the streets have evolved over time. Sometimes there's there's uh an area off the side of the of the of the street that is paved. Most of the time, it's not. Most of the time, it's designed so that we can have overland infiltration of water. So those areas are are dirt so that the water can be absorbed into the ground. Uh, and that's served, so that serves multiple purposes.
Thank you. Any council members have questions? Else, I'm gonna open up to public comment. I actually have one question. So the um, the proposed Jollyman, uh, not Jollyman, sorry. The proposed um Carmen Bridge, that's gonna go through that street, right? That's gonna go into that street.
That is correct.
So if Jolly, if Carmen Bridge is a bicycle preferred route, if we don't have sidewalks, then you're looking, we're looking at bicycle and pedestrians walking on the same street. Is that a picture correctly?
That would be correct um if we had semi-rural designations on both sides. Currently, this request is just for the east side. Uh, there is an intent to have sidewalk on the west side.
That, then, if that, I'm gonna come down to that question. Why are we requesting west side and not east side?
Um, with respect to the west side, there's already sidewalk installed along those sides. Um, so once we've kind of started a policy of an installation of sidewalks, we typically progress with uh ensuring that.
So you can go back to it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Um, in certain areas where there is no sidewalk, we would evaluate, is this an area that is in in need of sidewalk? Or could it be more of a semi-rural uh approach?
So eventually, if Carmen Bridge does go through, you have one side with sidewalks that somebody can walk on the sidewalk and bicycle can go there. But on the other direction, there will be no sidewalks, and bicycle and pedestrians will share the same road.
That is correct. I mean, the bicycles would be using the road anyway, um, but there would be sidewalk.
But the pedestrian would have to share with the bicycle. Uh, that's, that's what I'm trying to picture.
Well, the pedestrians would share with the bicyclists uh in in a semi-rural designation.
Right, yes, okay.
Pedestrians would have the ability to use a sidewalk on the west side.
Okay, understand. And uh one more question is, um, there are two homes that don't, didn't sign it. Do they disagree with it, or they they're okay with sidewalks? I'm just curious.
Um, there were seventeen homes petitioned, both the east and west side. Um, my understanding is one property owner we just could not get a hold of. Uh, they just didn't sign it, and one person was opposed to it.
So that one person wants the sidewalk? Opposed to the semi.
They were opposed to the semi-rural designation. I'm not sure if they wanted sidewalk.
Yeah, understand, they opposed it, understand. Okay, I'm finished my question. Any other council member has questions? Else, I'm open up to public comment.
Question, so how wide, oh, okay. How wide is the road if people can easily use the sidewalk on one side?
Uh, the road, uh, when fully constructed, will be forty feet from curb face to curb face.
More questions? I'm gonna open up, oh, council member Moore?
Okay, um, Chad, I just want to make sure that I have the right area. So this is the end of Carmen Road. And now we're, I just want people to get a, get a good sense of what the street looks like. Okay? Um, can anyone from staff verify? Okay?
Uh, I can verify that this is the area we're talking about.
Right, okay. So it's gonna be forty feet wide, you're saying? Because it looks pretty narrow right now.
Ultimately, when the road is fully built out, it will be forty feet wide.
Okay, and do you know what's gonna happen down here where you've got this 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 bend in the road? Ultimately?
Um, beyond uh this end here, um, that's where if Carmen Road Bridge is ever constructed, it would be uh at that fence in the north end.
Okay, and would you happen to know if this area here is pri- is private, um, private drive?
It is a public right of way.
It is public right of way. Okay, interesting. Okay, thank you.
Okay, I'd like to open up the public comment if there's no more questions. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, Mayor, we have one blue speaker card so far for Community Hall, and I see two hands raised on Zoom. Our speaker card for Community Hall is from Patrick Quoc. Welcome, Patrick.
Thank you. Good evening, uh, Madam Mayor and City Council and City Staff, City Managers. I, my name is Patrick Quoc here. I've been living at the one zero two 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 Carmen for the past twenty-four years. I am the one who circulated all the petitions to all the neighborhoods, seventeen of those. One of those is a rental, so the landlord, uh, Mr. Barron, uh, directly sent in uh the petition supporting the semi-rural. As it is right now, uh, we have about sixty-five houses altogether on Carmen and Scenic. Uh, of the east side, uh, every houses on Carmen and Scenic, they are all semi-rural, except the eleven one that are asking the petition. All the houses on the west side coming in from Stevens Creek into Janus and up Carmen, they all have sidewalk except the last three that are very old. So when they, uh, if if it remains the same, uh, they will have to put sidewalk to continuity to finish everything on the west side with sidewalk if these three houses uh were remodeled. Uh, so far, uh, the petitions, sixteen out of seventeen support the sidewalk. Uh, all the five on the west side, they supported it. On the east side, uh, ten out of eleven, they all supported the sidewalk. And uh. And it is very consistent with all the houses on the east side from Carmen to Scenic because they are all semi-rural designation. So I represented the residents because I, I circulated the petition and they all feel that as it is now to remain semi-rural, it will be very safe because the street is wide enough for the people, for the residents to bike and walk and skate and, and everything in here. And your questions that were raised was that if Carmen Bridge is, is to be built, our city can rescind the designation on the east side, but as far as the west side is concerned, it will have sidewalk all the way through from foothill, from Stevens Creek up Janus and into Carmen. There are five houses on the west side, three of those already have sidewalk. The other three, if they were to do the remodeling, they would have sidewalk. So a good continuation, all sidewalk on one side, on the west side of city. And by this petition, you know, it's very consistent with the neighborhood on the east side, Scenic and Carmen, they all have that. And we all feel they're safe and then right now, there hasn't been reported one single accident at all.
Thank you, Patrick, that is your time.
So we feel very safe. Thank you very much for your consideration.
And next we have Rota Five followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Rota.
Hi again, and I just wanted to get up and support Patrick Quoc's petition. Many of, as many of you know, he served on our city council for many years, highly decorated. He's, he knows Cupertino and he obviously knows his own neighborhood. And I think it's a no-brainer to go with semi-rural. I, I live in Montavista where we had sidewalk, no sidewalk, sidewalk, no sidewalk. It's been a mess and I just go with Patrick and, and I, I can't resist to make the pun, but with respect to the Carmen Avenue Bridge, why don't we cross that bridge when we get to it? Thank you.
Thank you, Rota. And our final speaker in Community Hall is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Okay, segue from Magical Bridge. It was interesting seeing the actual street views. I'm glad that Ms. Moore brought those up because I, I remember that area so well from growing up. We call that Who Who Hill, which was from an elderly lady from many, many years ago used to call it that. The Who Who House was up there. And Carmen, actually, there was, I think it actually, you, if I remember correctly, years ago, you could actually use that road on the other side. It wasn't blocked off. I may have the wrong road there. But it is, it is a unique area. I think it was part of Inspiration Heights from the nineteen-twenty when it was subdivided, et cetera. But there is a point in terms of having some continuity in the area. My brother owned a house in the airport district of Modesto years ago and it's a very poor section. And he actually, when he remodeled the house, he had a sidewalk put in. But I will tell you, there were no sidewalks anywhere else in the entire neighborhood. It was gang-ridden, it still is, it's a very poor area. And when he finally, he kept the house as a rental and he had moved to a different home with my sister-in-law. That's still, that house still is the only one after probably thirty years that had a sidewalk. So he was trying, but, but all in all, it's probably better to just have some continuity for the neighborhood. Down the road, eventually Public Works will be able to put in the sidewalk someday, but it's probably better to try to keep the neighbors happy with consistency. I'm also wondering if you're going to be putting in the Carmen Bridge there, will, you're going to have, obviously cars aren't going to be going over it, but will, you're going to have a lot of foot traffic, bicycles, skateboards, electric vehicles, et cetera, going down that street to go over the footbridge? I, I guess it's a, you'd call it a footbridge because it doesn't have cars on it. How, how does not having a sidewalk versus having a sidewalk affect the speed of vehicles going down there? Because when you have these electric bicycles, they can be going, I mean, I've been passed by them in cars. I mean, I mean, I've been in the car and they passed me in the bike lane. They're probably clipping along thirty-five or forty miles an hour. Is that, by having a semi-rural designation, is that going to affect the speed of traffic going through that area? I, I don't mean cars, I mean vehicles. Maybe they shouldn't have electric bikes on there. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And that concludes the speakers in Community Hall. So we will move to Zoom. We have three hands raised. Jennifer Sharon, San Ar, Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor Way and council members. I'm again speaking on behalf of myself. I ask something different, I think, than what most people are saying. I ask that you postpone voting on this item. The reason for this is that it's likely for the proposed staff work plan for the next few years that the council will be voting on whether to build the Carmen Bridge, which would connect the neighborhoods to the south and north of Stevens Creek. The bridge will change the amount, and I think a couple other speakers mentioned this, will change the amount of pedestrian and bike traffic on Carmen Road. That would be the appropriate time to consider whether to change the Carmen, Carmen Road with semi-rural designation or not. Now is really premature. One note is that bikes do use sidewalks. All kids under age thirteen plus their parents with them bike on the sidewalk. So, and, and let's face facts, sometimes people order that too, too. There's no rush to do this at this time and no sidewalk projects are planned on that street by the city. So please just postpone the decision until it seems like the appropriate time. And then, once we know all the facts, the real decision can be made with all the facts. So thank you again for considering my input and your work on behalf of Cupertino.
Thank you, Jennifer. Next we have San Ar followed by Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, San.
Yes, good evening, City Council and Mayor. I somewhat agree with Jennifer. I think it is important to assess safety conditions for pedestrians at all times of the day and all through the year. I'm concerned the staff report has no photographs of the area and I'm concerned there's no photographs taken at dusk when people dig out for walks in the neighborhood and no photographs at wintertime where we have early sunset. And I can tell you, having lived in these kinds of areas, that there's a lot of speeding traffic that tends to hit forty miles an hour in a twenty-five zone. And as Chad knows, I, I've given feedback consistently that sidewalks need to be installed for the safety of our pedestrians. We have school kids that walk down some of these roads. I see them all the time on, headed towards Stevens Creek and then headed up towards the, towards the shortcut to Montavista and so on. And I'd be concerned about visibility come evening hours. And why don't we have photographs? Why are we made to look at street maps and not look at actual photographs from a assessment of the site? I'm also concerned that the cost of sidewalk would then be transferred to the city as opposed to the homeowners if this decision were not made at the time of improvements to the home. And so I would request that the city stay on core and if there is a home going through improvements, to please enforce the additional sidewalk and hopefully the neighborhood will match the west side and provide pedestrian safety for pedestrians passing through. I'd also urge the city council members to actually visit the property and see for yourself and then make a call and avoid these scenarios where you have to rescind it at a later time and then the city has to spend money for what the homeowner should originally have done. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And our final speaker is Peggy Griffin. Welcome, Peggy.
Good evening, Mayor Way, Vice Mayor Mohan, council members and staff. I support Mr. Quoc's petition for semi-rural designation and the reason is consistency. If you have a house on the east side that goes for remodeling, the ordinance, the Public Works forces them to put a sidewalk in, whether there are connecting sidewalks or not. It just, it doesn't, it doesn't look right. It changes the look of the neighborhood. I encourage you, at one point, my husband and I went through the entire city and you would be amazed at the number of areas that are designated semi-rural. And if you go to them, they're each unique and trying to put a cookie cutter, same rules for everybody, when you're also trying to support neighborhoods, preserving neighborhoods. I know several of you said that that's what you were trying to do. They have different looks. And I've been on Carmen Road and it is a semi-rural place. And if at some other time you decide that you need sidewalks there, you have the ability to do that. But until then, preserve the look of the neighborhood by allowing all the people on the east side who want to be semi-rural to stay that way. It has a soft, it's a very relaxing feel. And in that neighborhood, I have not seen people, the, the, the street is narrow and I did not see people racing through. Of course, I haven't been there all times of day, but I think you need to also preserve the ability for different neighborhoods to be unique. We aren't all the same, just like people aren't the same. Allow them to be unique so that we can walk through our, our city and experience these different neighborhoods. Thank you.
Thank you, Peggy. Mayor, that was our final speaker.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. I'm going to close the public comment and bring you back to council. We have about twenty minutes to, no, sixteen minutes to decide before we go to eleven o'clock. So I would like to ask our council members, keep it brief. Councilmember Moore?
Thank you, Mayor Way. I have a quick question again for Chad. You mentioned, I believe, forty feet. Was that curb to curb?
The forty-foot would be curb to curb when the street's completely, fully constructed.
Okay, so forty feet curb to curb, will you have a four to five-foot parkway strip and then a four or fi, a four or five-foot sidewalk?
Typically, yeah, you'd have about a four and a half foot park strip and about a four and a half foot sidewalk if, if that were to be constructed.
Okay, and do the residents in that area know what that's going to look like dimension-wise compared to what, what they have there now? Has that been presented to them?
I mean, there are other side, other areas of the city that have that same layout. We are requiring dedication of any developer. So we're, you know, that land is being provided.
Okay, and I was wondering if we could hear from Patrick Quoc about this, if, if you've noticed any speeding in that area? What I'm seeing is that there's a very, there's a lot of turns in and between Carmen and Bellevue and I'm just wondering if it's been your experience that people speed through there?
The way it is now, it's, it runs into the dead-end street. So people, people who live around in here, they are residents. They know safety is a concern. So they would not risk to speed the car all the way, especially going down Quintera is a very narrow street if they speed. You know, this morning I saw garbage pickup, you know, it was so steep down in Quintera is Carmen, they have to back the gar, the garbage truck all the way. They would not, because there's no way to, to U-turn. To answer your question, it is people will not speed because number one, they live in the neighborhood. They are not people who, who are lost, looking for something. They are familiar with it. They are know that the people are running here. They know that they are safe, they are kids in here. They know that safety is, is concerned. And so far, as far as I am concerned, for twenty-five years, hardly any people actually got injured or accidents.
I would believe that, okay. So maybe this question is for Chad also. It seems as though the configuration of the roads actually is going to have a traffic calming effect because they're, they're pretty narrow and there's a lot of twists and turns and sounds like hills there as well.
You know, the neighborhood doesn't have a lot of twists. It is along a hillside. It should be noted that this section of Carmen Road is on a no outlet area there for, for vehicle traffic, that is. It's kind of a dead-end stretch. It goes in, serves around twenty properties and that's, those are the only properties that are served by this section of road.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Patrick, and thank you, Chad.
Any questions from the council? I, I do have, oh, Councilmember Chow, please.
Okay, so first I'd like to thank the staff for a very detailed staff report. It answered every one of my questions that I would have asked. So it considered ADA compliance and the possibility of considering Carmen Road and you answered that this designation can be rescinded by the city at the time. And the street light got her, every question is answered. I really appreciate a thorough report. It would have been nice if there were photographs of the area and areas with, with our sidewalk, but it's just a very thorough report. And it says that the proposed semi-rural area is similar in character to the surrounding neighborhood. And I looked up the Google map again, although I visited the area before, that is a dead-end street. So I understand the San Ar's concern that if, especially around school when cars passing through, but this is an area that's a dead end and even if Carmen Bridge is built in the future, it's going to be a pedestrian bicycle bridge. There won't be any through traffic, so there won't be car zooming by. There might be bicycles, but I think the forty feet is wide enough for pedestrian and bicycle. In a street that's rel, that has relatively little car traffic except the neighbors who live there. So it sounds like then, even with Carmen Bridge, there may or may not be need for a sidewalk. And at this point, I would think it makes sense to approve the semi-rural designation. And when we do need to consider Carmen Road, we may or may not need a sidewalk at that time. I do agree that we should allow Cupertino to have, different neighborhood to have different characters. We should not expect every neighborhood to have sidewalk in all of Cupertino. That's simply unrealistic and would not allow different areas of Cupertino to have its own neighborhood character. Maybe some area will be rural, semi-rural-like and that makes, that's diversity. That makes Cupertino great, so I would embrace that. Yeah, thank you.
Councilmember Chow, any more questions? Oh, no, discussions? Councilmember Mohan?
Yeah, I see no reason to not approve this recommendation. I did drive up and down Carmen Road yesterday and during school hours and there was just hardly any traffic there. Although there was, I think kids were still going to, crossing Stevens Creek. So I didn't have any concerns about traffic. Staff was able to, in their staff report as well as in my conversations with them, did confirm that there would not be, it, it would not interfere with garbage pickup or fire hydrants or, or even the future construction of the Carmen Road Bridge. So I'm, I'm good with this recommendation also with the understanding that it could be rescinded anytime there's another event that does not make this convenient any longer. So I would go with the staff recommendation.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Mohan. Any other comments? If not, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve the staff recommendation to approve the- to approve the designation of semi-rural, semi-rural designation for east side of Carmen Road.
May I have a second?
I'd like to second that and ask the attorney, do we need to say that it's, I don't know, categorically exempt from CEQA?
No, I would recommend against that because that's not on the agenda, so.
Very well, okay. So you've got your second.
Okay, it's being moved and seconded. Any further discussions? So if not, let's vote by light.
The motion carries unanimously.
Okay, so it's ten fifty-two and we are moving to, excuse me. We are moving to councilmember reports?
So the, so this, the meeting is terminated by operation of rule unless there is a vote to extend it.
Already, the meeting is adjourned.
Yes.
We finish most items anyway.